Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:34 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law, and we have a full quorum of the commission as everyone is present. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as City Commissioner Rini Betis leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here today in service to our community. Grant us wisdom, patience, and compassion as we make decisions that affect the lives of our residents. Help us to lead with integrity and to always seek the common good. Bless our city, our families, and those who serve it. May peace and progress guide our work tonight. Amen.
Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Addie, will you read us the conflict of interest?
Yes. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 On the consent agenda, item G, it's with the school district.
All ready?
Item three announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item three A, mayor's announcements. Mayor, do you have anything to announce?
So, yes, I do want to just briefly say that earlier this morning Commissioner Kinsley and Commissioner Betis and I and some of the PD, I know, went out over to WellMed, which is a wonderful facility that I really didn't have enough information about until today. This facility is not federally funded. They have a foundation, and they are able to raise funds to operate this facility in our community, and it is for individuals that are 60 years or older, and they have a, almost like a fitness center, if you will, a community center, and it's free for anyone over the age of 60. They have Zumba, they have yoga, craft classes, pool, there's different types of events, and it is really just a nice sense of community. And today, they celebrated one of their members, and it was his 100th birthday today. This is beautiful. And this individual, some of you may know because he's been in several community events, Mr. Alfredo Alvarez, and he is a World War II vet, and just an amazing human being and has contributed a lot to our community. So it was such a nice opportunity for us to be there and celebrate him. So just if you see him around town, tell him happy birthday. He still drives, he still attends community events, and so it's just, you know, you will see him around town, just give him a high five or a happy birthday, and I'm sure he'll appreciate that. The other, I wanted to just thank staff for their incredible work, their community that, you know, just really putting together an amazing state of the city, and everyone that took, you know, took part in putting that together. A heartfelt thank you from the commission, and we know that it was a lot of planning, and it could be stressful, but you did an amazing job, and it was a wonderful event. And so some of you that were not able to attend, you can find it on our YouTube channel, and you can also, I believe it's on Facebook, and it was streamed there and available also. And so thank you to Brandon, who did lots of the video content and did an amazing job with the city commissioners' videos, very informative, very impactful. And one of the best things about the state of the city is that it is a time to give back. And so this year, we were very happy to continue on that tradition, and we gave $50,000 of proceeds that went to nonprofits, and $10,000 went to the RGV Food Bank, who is an incredible organization, and during the flood also helped feed many, many families in our community. So we were able to restock their shelves and further their mission. And then another $40,000 went to the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen to provide assistance for all the great work that they're doing. And in particular, they're going to be funding a podcast studio for the young kids there so that they can work on leadership skills, speech, and just, you know, giving an opportunity for them to shine and develop a skill that's going to assist them later in life. And so I know that our crew here will be very helpful in mentoring them as well. And then some of the, the rest of those proceeds will go for all the programming and the rest of the work that they do there. So thank you, thank you to everybody that showed up. And last but not least, we want to invite everybody to listen or subscribe to our new podcast called Let's Talk Harlingen, and the first episode dropped last week, Thursday, and it is a podcast all about Harlingen, and you will hear, you know, information regarding city, city commission meetings to what's happening with projects, all things Harlingen. And so you can find us anywhere you listen to your podcast, and you can also see it on YouTube and on Facebook, I believe. And the great thing about this is, like the state of the city, no taxpayer dollars were used to be able to buy any of the equipment. It was all through the PEG fund, and we don't have enough time to go through all of that of how that money came about, but we're very fortunate that the city was, provided that opportunity, and so it's just another platform for y'all to enjoy and to get information regarding this city. And I think that's all I got.
Item three B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to announce?
Yes, I do. I'd like to invite the public to the library ribbon cutting on June 16th at 2:00 PM. We're going to have a ribbon cutting for the newly remodeled children's area. I also want to publicly thank the Junior League for their donation to the city that helped spur on the redevelopment. So thank you. So if you have a chance, please come by the library on June 16th. And for all you fathers out there, I want to wish you a happy Father's Day for June 15th, and for all of you celebrating a father, I hope you have a great and safe holiday. That's all I have.
Item three C, city commission member announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
I just want to let the mayor and Commissioner Perez know that I got my green t-shirt as I was leading the way. I'm ready to join the team there.
You're seniorific now?
None.
None. I just wanted to remind the community, especially District Five, that next week, my district, District Five, will be conducting a town hall meeting on next Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 at the convention center. So all of you District Five residents, that's everything west of the expressway, if you have any issues, any concerns, you want to know about what's been done in our district within the past year, what's upcoming in the district, please find a way to make it out there. So again, it's next Thursday on the 12th from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Harlingen Convention Center.
Item four, proclamation and presentation of awards. Item four A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight Jasmine has brought Beena. She was super active a few minutes ago, but she's about a one-year-old, I believe lab mix, or she may have some healer in her, but she's been at the shelter for about six weeks to two months, and she's waiting to find her forever home. Anybody who's interested in Beena or any of the other animals at the animal shelter are welcome to contact 956-216-5250, or they can go by 1106 Markowski and see all the dogs and cats that are available for foster or adoption there at the shelter. I did want to just throw out real quick, this Saturday, the Harlingen Animal Shelter will be at Pet Co. in Weslaco, and they'll have animals out there for adoption from 12 to 3:00.
That's fantastic. She's such a cutie. Any vaccine clinics coming up?
We have a microchip clinic this month on the 21st, but we're not going to be having vaccines this month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, proclamation proclaiming the month of June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Our first proclamation, I will invite Monica from the Department of Family and Protective Services to accept, but I will read the proclamation as follows. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions, and whereas abusive elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across this country, and in 2024, there were over 100,000 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abuse in Texas. And whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly unreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear, whereas adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds in communities, and whereas raising awareness of elder abuse and providing resources and education can empower individuals and communities to recognize, prevent, and respond effectively to abuse. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Harlingen, Texas, and urge all residents to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of older adults and people with disabilities. Monica, if you'd like to come up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sepulveda and Commissioners. Let me first thank, thank you for proclaiming June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Harlingen. The APS program remains focused on raising awareness of elder abuse. On behalf of our program, I would like to thank all of our first responders, all of our judicial partners for the continued support in helping APS carry out the mission, which is to protect our older adults and people with disabilities. It is through this collaboration that we are forming public and private partnerships to identify stronger supports are needed, and where existing connections must be reinforced as an essential first step toward defending our community against elder abuse. To report any abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation, you can call our hotline at 1-800-252-5400, or online at txabushhotline.org. Thank you for the service and your leadership in helping us work toward addressing the underreported issue of elder abuse. Thank you.
Just want to thank you also for all the hard work that you do. It is essential, unfortunately, right, in our community, and it is hard work, and we want you to know that, of course, the City of Harlingen stands ready to assist in any way, any shape or form that you need us, and we're definitely going to be champions of whatever it is that you need moving forward. So if I could have the commission join, we'd love to take a picture with you for the proclamations.
Citizen communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for a public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We had a total of four citizen communications. Mayor, we'll begin with Ms. Lorena Galarza.
Let me know when, please.
You can state your name and address, and then I'll start.
My name is Lorena Galarza. My address is 210 East Linda Street in Harlingen, Texas, 78550. My name is Lorena Galarza, and I reside in District One. I have dedicated my time and efforts to fostering a better community for the people of our district. Having served on the Community Development Advisory Board, I found fulfillment in contributing to our local community, whether it was through collaborating with nonprofit organizations or helping connect resources to those in need. I love community. Currently, I hold the position of President of Neighborhood Watch in District One and serve on the CASA Board, furthering my commitment to safety and advocacy. My capacity on the Community Development Advisory Board was as parliamentarian, where the primary function of the board is to review federal block grants and recommend their distribution to local nonprofit organizations, which include Loews &amp; Fishes, Family Crisis Center, among others, as well as funding for parks, home repairs, and home purchases, just to mention a few. The community board operates on an as-needed basis throughout the year to discuss and evaluate applications for these grants. It is a role that demands careful consideration, questioning, and collaboration with applicants, ensuring that tax dollars are allocated where they are most impactful. However, my tenure on the board was marred by unfortunate circumstances due to threats and harassment from Jim Young, the Chair of the Board, and appointed to the board by you, Rini Betis. This harassment went so far as to include the use of the F-word, creating an environment that was both hostile and untenable. Despite reporting the first instance of harassment to the Harlingen City Commission in May of 2023, no action was taken to address the issue. Tragically, history reported itself last week, leaving me in a position where I felt unprotected and unsupported. Instead of receiving the safeguards one would expect, I now find myself facing retaliation and being removed from this board entirely. For those who know me, my commitment to serving our community is unwavering. These events are deeply disheartening, but I remain steadfast in using my voice and efforts to advocate for fairness, equality, and the well-being of the individuals and organizations. Harassment and retaliation have no place in public service, and I hope that my experience serves as an example for change, ensuring that no one else endures what I have faced. The Community Development Director is Sandy Alvarez, and led by Assistant City Manager Josh Ramirez. I'm recommending the removal of Jim Young and internal audit of its department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ron Lozano.
Approximately for two years, I've lamented that the PR BS had gone from zilch a few years ago to over a million-dollar expenditure to lend the correct perception to politicians' follies. Look where we've landed. Got the gall to say we're doing good. And emblazoning that on city property, and particularly the vehicles, so enough people that don't get out and about can be alerted to how great y'all are. At least three of you have no conception of the term humility. However, one of you has heard me say something well of the aforementioned Jim, but it is regretful that the true culprit is appeased. And some of those that feel you're so gallant in the armed forces, you should know Chamberlain. You should know where appeasement leads, and his latest victim is discharged. Perception hurts. Eventually, this dictator despot will return to where he came, and we can all lead more tranquil lives. But perceived appeasement will only embolden Jim. Maybe we're in the middle of something we don't really understand, but these frequent 1,000-year torrents we're subject to. Perhaps the Almighty is trying to alert us, oh, yes, he does exist, that maybe we need to change this regime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
Next up, we have Robert Lefwitch.
Robert Lefwitch, 909 East Parkwood. The last I checked, verbal abuse is a, could be a criminal offense, and we just heard a victim of that within the confines of the city. And for that person, the perpetrator, not to be held accountable is just appalling. The fact that the victim in this case has been terminated off this board, and for Commissioner Kinsley, this is the second time in the last couple of months that we've seen one of your board members fall, another lady from the Veterans Board. You did not support her. You did not have any loyalty. You have no loyalty now. The city is showing that they are ready to cover up and move on, whether it's a conflict of interest, whether it's collusion, breaking open meetings laws, or other things, talking about yourselves amongst yourselves outside of meetings. Does it happen? Who knows? But I find it uniquely curious that a replacement, and I'm assuming that's a replacement, has already been announced for somebody who's already been withdrawn from a board just in the last few days. I hope that's not the case. I hope that that's not how that pans out. The fact of the matter is, this city is in trouble ethically, and I proposed, and it was voted and approved, for an ethics commission many years ago, and I am telling y'all now that y'all need to staff that ethics commission and create some type of avenue for citizens because right now, there's no control. The police chief reports to y'all, the city attorney reports to y'all, the city auditor reports to y'all. Nobody outside the city can say anything or have any complaint that can go anywhere. It all gets covered up. You've got the airport where the FAA has done an investigation, the DA has said they're in an investigation, but yet there, is there an internal investigation? There's not even an internal investigation, is there? We haven't read about one. Is there one? I haven't seen one on the agenda. How can that be that you guys are controlling? Y'all are like the wolf in the hen house. I mean, there's, it's just unbelievable what y'all do and what y'all cover up. A person should be held criminally responsible for verbal abuse, and yet the victim is the one that's terminated. It makes absolutely no sense.
Time is up, Mr. Lefwitch. Next, we have Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, 706, excuse me, Nantucket Drive. So basically, I just want to talk about transparency and responsibility. So as always, as I've said many times, you know, the commission, politicians in general are elected to do the right thing for the right reasons, and sometimes that doesn't always pan out. Trust me, I know this. My family's been involved in politics for a very long time. So if there's things that are going on that shouldn't be going on, then that needs to be corrected. There needs to be oversight. You hear all the time about, well, if I only would have known, or, you know, somebody would have said something. And I think most of you guys know, and ladies, know that I will always say something. And I have suffered repercussions from that, for that, where, you know, ordinances have been changed that affect my businesses directly. Back in the day, an ordinance was changed, I had the police handing out tickets at one of my venues. It cost me $200,000 in losses. Filed litigation at that time, the city only had a little pot of $3 million. You know, that's why my attorney sued for $10 million, and we were going to win because of the grandfather clause for a little simple oversight that the city attorney, I guess, forgot about. So who knows where they went to law school. Now the city has 38.1 million, apparently, in the reserve fund and stuff, so, you know, I would just proceed with caution because that money didn't come out of the, out of the air. The taxpayers helped raise that fund, and if for it to be just lost because there's not correct oversight, or because, you know, I got somebody's back, I don't, for me, I don't do business like that. You know, I do business for the right reasons with the right people, and if I smell something that's not right, then I don't do business with those individuals. And when it comes around again, then they usually suffer for that. So I've lasted a long time doing the right things for the right reasons, but I had a very good teacher, my father. So you guys were elected for reasons, I just say do the right thing. There's a lot of good things that are going on in Harlingen, and we don't want that tainted. We don't want that messed up when all the effort has been put in to make it a great place. And that's basically what I have, is just remember, you got to be held, you know, accountable and make those responsible for do, for doing the wrong things. That's all I have, and I beat the buzzer, so I'm out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
That concludes the citizen communication, Mayor. Seeing that we, item six, there are no minutes to report at this time, we will move on to item seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member request an item be removed from the consent agenda.
All right. Can we remove item seven G from the consent agenda? Is there anything else to remove?
H, please.
G and H, anything else? Is there a motion to approve the remainder, A through F?
Oh, is it approved? Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now moving on.
Item G, consideration and possible action to approve the first extension to the 2023-2025 inter-local agreement between the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District and the City of Harlingen for the School Resource Officer Program for school year 2025-2026. Please.
Gabe, did you get input from the chief on this? And is this a recommendation?
Yes, he's, they're just going to renew this for another year, so we're recommending approval.
Okay. From, and, yes, all right.
Motion. Second.
Do you have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries, and let the record reflect that Commissioner Betis has abstained from this item. Moving on.
Item H, consideration, excuse me, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speed humps in the following locations. This item was requested by Commissioner Rini Betis and Mayor Pro Tem Ford Kinsley. First up is Stewart Place Road from Business 83 to Garrett Road.
And I, for one, would like to add the 1,400 block of South G plus the 3,500 block of West Lamb.
And I'll add the 500 block of North S Street. S is in Steve. S is in Steve.
And just to renew, Commissioner Lopez's conversation on lowering the speed limit, I think, would be less costly and more effective. So I don't know where we're at on that.
Staff is looking into that ordinance. So we'll have something for you, hopefully, in the next couple of meetings.
As I recall, the last time we talked about it, so you said we had to have like a study done, right? Sorry to call you on the spot.
So through our comprehensive plan, we're getting an updated thoroughfare amendment map that pretty much outlines existing, proposed, X, Y, Z. We're in that phase right now. We're working with engineering Anna Friesen Nichols to redline some of the highways and streets and major corridors. We could also mention to them that we're proposing, looking at maybe lowering the speed on some. So today, we did have a discussion for the downtown district, particularly Jackson and Van Buren. So we will mention this to them and have something for you all to review.
Thank you so much.
And just all the other neighborhoods too, right?
Correct. It's going to be citywide.
Okay.
Neighborhood wide.
Residential.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. With those additions, can we get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 8, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, City Manager's Report. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to report?
Just that we have started the budget process, and so we'll be sending out an email to the mayor and commissioners with some possible dates for workshops. I don't anticipate having any this month, but we'll start for next month. So we'll get those out to you, hopefully, next week.
In July?
Yes. And that's all I have.
Okay. Item B, Staff Reports. We have Danny Diaz, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mayor and Commissioners, Danny Diaz, Parks Recreation Director. We've got a short presentation here for you guys. Here in the Parks Maintenance Department, we have 29 employees. It consists of one park superintendent, one park ground supervisor, two maintenance technicians, 21 groundkeepers, and four part-time maintenance workers. They maintain 28 parks, 40 canal banks, Loop 499 median, 15 ride-away islands, 39 sports fields, 26 miles of multi-use trails, and 20 city buildings. A month and a half ago, we commenced work here in Harlingen Field. The staff worked aggressively to convert the baseball field into a soccer field, currently being used by the Red Crown Soccer Team. And two soccer games have been played there so far. The Harlingen Field Buildings, staff repaired the player locker rooms, press box, merchandise room, VIP area, restrooms, and pressure washed the whole facility. And as you can see, it was in bad shape. And that's the completed scope of work after staff did all that work. Penalty Park. Staff cleared overgrown trees around the pond, addressed the erosion control. Staff will also be installing a pond fountain. I put a little sample there on the right corner of what we're looking at, and we want it to be red, white, and blue at the same time. So I think that'll be great for that pond. The pier on the north side will be renovated, brought up to compliance. It's not ADA compliance at the time, so it's out of service. Shrubs and native plants will be planted around the pond. Shaded structures and benches will be added on the west and south side of the pond. And duck feeders will be installed as well. As you can see on the left, where the people go out there and feed them, there's no grass. The ducks are just tearing it up when they're eating. So we're going to install some duck feeders so we can get that grass back on there. McKelvey Park. Staff cleared overgrown trees as well and brush at the Business 77 drainage offal that were impeding the flow of stormwater. We were getting complaints of people that they didn't want to use the trail because it was bad. And we ended up, you know, going out there and doing an assessment, and we had people living in that brush. So we had to remove them from there. Also, staff will be installing a waterfall pump at the top of the hill with landscape, shaded structures, and benches for the public. And this is what staff is working on right now at the time. So that's kind of an idea of what it'll look after, you know, we're all done with it. Bestial Park. The staff completed walking trail and basketball courts with the help of Public Works. Public Works did about 75% of this work there, so appreciate Public Works. Staff has commenced installation of solar lights as well. And hopefully, by the end of the week, we should be completed with the installation of those lights. Bonito Pocket Park. Construction of the Pocket Park has commenced. It's going to have bioswell there with river rock, walking trail, some native plants, weld in exercise equipment that we're going to install in that park. So, oh, and a bridge to cross the road surface. Stewart Place Pocket Park. That's the one that's being proposed. It's under works. That's the layout for it. Proposed basketball court, walking trail, kids playground, and the parking. That's the preliminary planning layout. Dixieland Park. Construction for the new basketball court will commence next month. So we're going to get together with Public Works so to see if they can help me with this project. I hope they will. Chris?
[laughing]
Pickleball courts. The pickleball courts at the community center are 90% complete. You can see that little building on the east side on the left picture right there. We're transforming that little place into like a merchandise room. We're painting it, pressure washing it, we're cleaning it all up. Staff is already working on that, so hopefully, here in the next few weeks, we'll have people playing on these courts. Athletics. When first came on board, there were some issues that staff and I knew that needed to be addressed. And the only way that that was going to happen was in order for us to create an athletic crew. So we came up with one, and now this crew, that's all they do on a daily basis. They jump on our fields, they make sure that they're taken care of, and they're up to compliance where the leagues need them. We're doing a great job. And our pools, staff cleaned and pressure washed and painted both pools, the Victor Pool and Longsi Hill Pool. We also are working with the aquatic supervisor to come up with a plan to where these pools will be used all year. We don't want them sitting there, you know, six months, seven months out of the year. That's not good. So that's what we're working on. And that's what I have. Questions?
Why didn't we start on the parks earlier? I'm sorry, the pools earlier? Because summertime's already here, the kids are looking to jump in.
Same question I asked when I came on board.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to change that.
And just for the public, because I know I've gotten some questions about the splash pad that's right there by the park.
The Longsi Hill Pool?
Yes. You're working on it? Any time for it to be open, anytime soon?
Hopefully, we'll be working by next Friday.
Next Friday? Okay.
That's the plan. The pool and the splash pad.
Are we going to be having swimming lessons at the pools? Yes, sir.
So I just want to commend you and staff on the baseball field, now soccer field. I was out there this past weekend with my family, and it was, everybody had a blast. What an incredible experience. I think there's a little nostalgia going on because I don't, you know, just thinking about the White Wing games and things that we used to do back in the day, it seemed, it felt like that. There was lots of families. The facilities looked great, and everybody was having a great time. I think that it took a lot of work, so we appreciate it. I would like to see postseason for the Red Crowns, for us to have kind of like a recap on how we can continue to support them and improve the fields. I did notice the little things on the field itself, just because I think I wasn't just a spectator, I was also kind of looking to see what that looked like. And there were some concerns, but overall, I thought it was fantastic. Facility looked great. Families were having a wonderful time, and this is going to be such a great addition for family entertainment in our community. So thank you for that. Pendleton, I also want to thank you for taking into consideration. I know we had a lady come out here and provide us some concerns, and it looks like you're checking those boxes to make sure that we're balancing safety and also preservation and our ducks that everybody loves. I love the future layout that you've got there. McKelvey, I know I get with Oscar a lot. That's one that I think we need to continue to work on. And just, I would encourage you to use the media team so that way, the community is abreast of what it is that y'all are doing and the reasons why. I think, you know, obviously, safety is an issue, but more than, you know, also stormwater, things that you're doing for reasons, as long as the community knows along the way. But I think you've stepped into this role, Danny, and are doing a great job. And I think we all knew that you would, so we appreciate the hard work. The pickleball, I think we're all excited. You said 90%, so it's summertime. If you had to put a date on it, when do you think that then it will be open?
I would say by two weeks, you should be playing out there.
Sure, you want to tell me that?
Weather permitting.
I've been on them since break about this. The guys know. But they've been doing fantastic. They've been staying on top of it. They went out there, and they are fine tuning some of the paint. That's what you guys told me last night. There was, you know, discrepancies, as you called them earlier. So, great job, guys.
So on that note, I think that it's probably time to have the conversation of maybe some of the buildings going back to parks, just because, you know, you're putting all this money and investment, especially into the community center, the pickleball courts in the back, and then you've got the community center indoors. They need to complement one another. And so it may, with all the programming that you have with Dos Salud Secuentas and, you know, all the other partners, probably, I mean, I think I'll leave that to Oscar and to you to kind of figure out, is it all the buildings or just some of the buildings? I don't know. I don't know. I know we have a lot of buildings. I know you're maintaining them, but I think that way, there's better collaboration because of, you know, the stuff we talked about earlier this week on those classes. So, but great job overall. Excited for all the stuff that you're doing in the parks. And I think that the community will be really happy to know that you're prioritizing these pools because we get those complaints quite a bit. And we got a lot of cool opportunities for people to train, all levels, whether they're Iron Man or, you know, just want to go out and play basketball, right? And so I think Harlingen gives it all. So thank you. Thank you, Danny. That's all I have.
If I may, I've been at both of the home games for the Red Crowns, and y'all have done an amazing transition. I mean, it's tremendous. But the concession stand is a horrible failure. I know we're not running it. They need some help, some guidance, because people are standing in that line for 30 minutes, and they get up there, and there's nothing left. And so, I mean, they just need a little support maybe on that side. Otherwise, that's a homerun.
And I talked to them about that after this last game because there were a lot of people, and especially, like, my kids, or Evan, he doesn't drink sodas. He just drinks water, other.
And there was none.
Yeah, that's my child. And so there was none. So there's no water, it's just sodas and stuff. But I think that they were kind of trying to get a feel for it, but I think they're going to be better prepared for this next game since the others will be out and they'll be back, I think, at the last week of June or something like that. But I second that. But it also seemed really, really hot for them back there. When we got up to the front, I could feel the heat. Yeah, great time. All right. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
How are you guys doing staff-wise level?
I need some stuff, for sure.
I know we've been putting a lot on you.
Yeah, there's a lot of work out there. We need to catch up. We're behind schedule big time.
Just remember, budget time. Gabe's favorite time's coming up, so.
Budget time.
We can ask that question in July.
Table that question, right? Thank you guys so much for everything.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 9, Public Hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. There were no submissions for public hearing comments, Mayor.
Okay. I'll go through these quickly. Item 9A, Public Hearing Amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 105, Article 2, Section 16, Definitions by Adding Definitions Pertaining to Repetitive Loss and Increased Cost Compliance. Modifying the Substantial Damage and Substantial Improvement Definitions in Adding Section 105-64 Pertaining to Repetitive Losses of the Harlingen Code of Ordinance. This time, having no one here to speak for or against, Item 9A will close the public hearing. Item 9B, Public Hearing for an SUP Request to Allow an Adult Business in General Retail District Located at 1706 East Tyler Avenue, Suites 8 and 9, Bearing a Legal Description of Lot 2 Tyler Place Subdivision. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against this item. Are, okay, are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So typically, you would fill out a form to speak on the item, but since you're the applicant, welcome to our meeting, and we'll go ahead and give you three minutes to speak.
I mean, I'm basically just here just to let you all know, we applied for a special use permit, I mean, because I'm here with my partner, Mike. I mean, this is our career, it's what we do for a living. So the only way I work to support my family, you know, so we're just trying to get our business up and operating, you know, as soon as possible. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Are you Mr. Rivas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rivas. At this time, having no one else signed up to speak in favor or in opposition to this item, we'll close the public hearing. Item 9C, Public Hearing for the Voluntary Annexation of 88.40 Acres of Land out of Portion of Blocks 15 and 16, Subdivision C, located along Kroger Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park Road. This time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against the item. We will close the public hearing. Melinda?
Item 10, Action Items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve an Ordinance on First Reading, Amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 105, Article 2, Section 16, Definitions by Adding Definitions Pertaining to Repetitive Loss and Increased Cost Compliance. Modifying the Substantial Damage and Substantial Improvement Definitions and Adding Section 105-64 Pertaining to Repetitive Losses of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Planning and Development.
Can we get a reading of the ordinance?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Ordinance 25 reads as follows. An ordinance of the City of Harlingen amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 105, Flood Damage Prevention, by adding definitions pertaining to repetitive loss and increased cost compliance, modifying the substantial damage and substantial improvement definitions and adding Section 106-64 pertaining to repetitive losses, providing for a repealer and separability clauses.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve an Ordinance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit, Request to Allow an Adult Business Tattoo Studio in a General Retail District Located at 1706 East Tyler Avenue, Suites 8 and 9, Bearing a Legal Description of Lot 2 Tyler Place Subdivision. Applicant Demos Rivas, Planning and Development.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Ordinance Number 16-8, of the City of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit to allow an adult business, specifically a tattoo studio, in a general retail district located at 1706 East Tyler Avenue, Suites 8 and 9, bearing a legal description of Lot 2 Tyler Place Subdivision. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item 10C, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve an Ordinance on Second and Final Reading for the Voluntary Annexation of 88.40 Acres of Land out of a Portion of Blocks 15 and 16, Subdivision C, located along Kroger Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park Road. Applicant Javier Inojosa, Planning and Development. Applicant Javier Inojosa Pu, planning and development.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose 88.40 acres out of a portion of Blocks 15 and 16. Harlingen Land and Water Company, Subdivision C, located along the, along the south side of Kroger Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park Road, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Got a motion?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10D, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit, request to allow a community residential facility in a general retail district on a property bearing a legal description of 5.9236 acres out of 8.6170 acres out of Block 55 David and Stevenson subdivision, located on the southeast corner of Breedlove Street and North Loop 499. Applicant Alan Ozuna, this item was tabled at the regular city commission meeting of May 21, 2025, planning and development.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can we get a reading of the ordinance?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, ordinance number 16-8, of the City of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit to allow a community residential facility in a general retail district on a property bearing a legal description of 5.9236 acres of land out of 8.1670 acres of Block 55 David and Stevenson subdivision, located at the southeast corner of Breedlove Street and North Loop 499.
Can I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10E, consideration and possible action to amend Text dot Resolution R13-32 for Interstate I-2 ROW Maintenance, Public Works.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And just for the public, it's because everyone on this commission reads their packets, and staff does an amazing job providing us the information that we need, and all of that is available on our website.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, moving on.
Item 11, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any positions subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or by laws.
None.
None.
All right. So no motion needed.
And that's it? We have no executive session or?
Just let the record reflect it. It is now 6:27 PM, and we will adjourn the meeting.